This evening, we will be meeting in council committees. The meeting will be called to order by the city council president, who will then pass discussion over to a respective committee. The chair of the committee will introduce the discussion topics and provide an overview of the issues at hand. If needed, members of the administration will offer brief statements to provide further context. We will then welcome input from the community. Any citizens who wish to speak will be asked to state their name and address, both verbally and on the sign and sheet located at the podium. Individuals will be given one opportunity to share their thoughts, and the committee chair will have the authority to limit each speaker to three minutes. Once all citizens have had the opportunity to speak within the 15-minute time period allotted for total public participation on each topic, the public comment portion will be closed. Council committee members will then continue their deliberations. There may be additional questions directed to the administration during this time. When the discussion on the topic concludes, the chair will indicate whether legislation will be introduced at the next regular session of council and move on to the next item on the agenda or adjourn the committee if their work is complete. The next committee chair will then call their committee to order, proceeding in the same manner as before. Once all committees have adjourned, city council will conclude for the evening.
It's August 11th, 2025 at 7:04 PM, and we are in committees this evening. The first committee of this evening is the Committee of the Whole, and the first agenda item is Title I, Amending City Code Fees for 2026. Bear with us, this is quite a lengthy set of fees to review. We do have the Deputy Service Safety Director, Andrew Chiki, with us this afternoon, this evening, who will be helping us through these proposed fee changes. I will be introducing each of the fees, one by one, and allowing the administration to comment before asking the public for comment, and then city council, and the city council, of course, can ask for more information from the city administration. So, our first fee to consider is the citation for garbage and rubbish. This was last updated in 2015, so this is simply updating Title I, where we have our city fees. Currently, the first offense is a $50 citation for garbage or rubbish, and the proposal is to increase this by $25. So, the first offense would be 75, a second offense would move from 75 to 100, third offense 100 to 125, fourth offense 125 to 150, and fifth offense 150 to 175. City administration, anything to add to this fee?
Yeah, I guess to provide some context on why we are doing what we're doing in this way, several years ago, city council requested that we do an annual fee review, as opposed to presenting various fees and code changes related to fees more haphazardly throughout the year, that we kind of review those all in one shot and provide that in one document, and that's what we've endeavored to do the last several years, and this year is no different. So, to start with, 50203, Citation for Garbage and Rubbish, you will see later on in Title 13 and Title 29, the exact same adjustment of an increase of $25. This is typically related to the solid waste officer when they do citations. You know, imagine that someone had a party and left beer cans all over the yard. Those are the types of citations we're talking about with garbage and rubbish, and then later related to sanitation and litter, and so those all kind of follow the same context.
Thank you, Mr. Chiki. Does the public have anything to ask or add about this fee change? Moving to city council, any discussion of this fee change, an increase of $25 for each offense? Members, Spianis.
Thank you. When I talked with Andrew Chiki earlier this week, he explained that this would, these fees do not have to do with blighted property, that's a separate issue, so.
So, I think people need to know that.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from city council? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the next fee change, and that is... Excuse me. Section 5.03.04, Water Rates. This is a change from $100 to $50 for the after-hours turn-on, and I'll let Mr. Chiki discuss why. Addition to this would be a $50 after-hours turn-off. Andrew, would you like to explain that?
This is simply just a code cleanup. It was intended to be $50 for an after-hours turn-on and $58 for an after-hours turn-off. This is typically somebody's experiencing a water crisis, they have a leak at their house or a water line break on their line, and they have to call to request to have that water turned off. The plumber and themselves aren't supposed to shut off the water at the meter or turn it back on, and so we have to call somebody out for that, and for some reason, both of those fees got added together as $100 when they did this a couple of years ago. So, this is really intended to clean it up and match what we actually do.
Thank you, Mr. Chiki. Does the public have anything to add to this fee change? Members of the council, any comments or questions on this proposed fee change? Yes, Member Claude Felter.
Only that it's refreshing to see a fee going down by 50%.
Thank you, Member Claude Felter. Moving on, the next fee to be amended is Section 5.04.08, Sewer Rates. I'll just, I'm just going to read the first three rate changes. The residential rate being amended from $6.18 to $6.24, the commercial rate from $6.99 to $7.20, and the industrial rate from $7.71 to $7.94. This is based on a base rate of 1,000 gallons of water, and then there are numerous fees as more thousands of gallons of water are used, but that's the basic rate that I believe most will see. Mr. Chiki, do you have anything to add?
Simply that the residential rate and the 0-15,000 gallon rate, which the majority of citizens fall into that category, it's an increase of 1%, whereas the other increases this year are 3%. Last year, for context, it was 3% across the board, and I believe the year before, it was about the same, and so this is less of an increase for the residential portion.
Thank you, Mr. Chiki. Does anyone from the public like to comment on this sewer rate increase proposal? Seeing none, members of council, members Spianis?
Yeah, I apologize, but I'd like to go back to the first section, I just have a quick question. So, should have thought of this earlier, but I just wonder, and I think we talked about this, but I think it's important for people to hear it, so if the, if, as you were describing, a group of students has, you know, junk all over their rental area, so does that charge go to the renters, or does that charge go to the landlord?
Just a clarification, members Spianis, you're going back to citation for garbage and rubbish?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, section one, I'm sorry, the first one, I apologize.
So, 50203, as well as in Title 13 and 29, each one of those citations is a fix to the property, it is a citation that is to the property or the rental, and it gets placed on the utility bill, so typically whoever is occupying that residence is paying that citation.
So, it's basically whoever's paying the utility bill is paying that citation?
That's how it's placed on there.
Any, does that answer your question, members Spianis?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, moving back to Section 5.04.08, Sewer Rates. To council, any comments or questions on these rate, proposed rate changes? Member Swank.
The residential increase is 1% for the first 1,000, is there an increase for subsequent thousands?
So, what typically happens is your, your base rate charge is based on your average usage over a period of time, so if you are in the 0-15,000 gallon rate, you get charged $32.60, and then for each 1,000 gallons thereafter, you get charged the additional amount. And so, in this case, if you, for some reason, increased your usage one month, it doesn't change your average over that period of time, it would stay at that 1%.
No, that's not what I asked. The first 1,000 are $6.24, correct?
Correct.
What are each, and this year it's 6.18. So, typical person that has 4,000, four times 6.24 is $24.96, correct?
No.
If you use 4,000 gallons, one gallon is 6.24, correct?
You have it backwards. The monthly base rate charge is your, is your first...
Is 6.24.
The base rate charge is 32.60.
32.60. So, if you use 1,000 gallons, you get charged 32.60?
That's, that's the, the base rate across the, across the, whether you use that much or up to, up to $15,000, my understanding is the base, that's the base rate.
If you use, if you use 10 gallons, if you use 10,000 gallons, you're not paying 32.64, you're paying over 100 bucks.
Do I have that correct? Am I off on this?
I wish I brought my utility bill. So, what, my question is a simple one. 32.60 will remain as the base rate? Oh, it's going to go up 1%?
It's going up 1% from 32.28 to 32.60.
And each 1,000, each 1,000 gallons will go up 1% from 6.18 to 6.24, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's it. Question and answer, thank you.
Sorry, I think we had some miscommunication there.
Yeah. That's only 1%. Now, the other question I have, though, and I grant it, it's only 1%, is this really necessary? We started the year with a sewer fund of $5.5 million. Right now, we have an unencumbered balance of $2.9 million. If we continue collecting our sewer rates, our sewer at the rate we've been collecting, we will end up the year at $5.4 million. Is it necessary? I'm not saying it isn't, but is it necessary?
So, to that point, we are really heavily leveraged in debt in the sewer fund. We've taken out an enormous amount of loans over the last 10 years, and this is to go to help us service that debt faster and get us to pay down on that.
Aren't we talking about the sanitary sewer here?
Sanitary sewer.
Yeah. Well, I'm talking about the sanitary sewer fund, started the year with $5.5 million. We have an unencumbered balance of $2.9 million. When you take what we bring in a month, approximately $420,000, times the remaining at this point in time, this is a one-month dated spreadsheet from the auditor, we will end up the year with $5.4 million.
Just a point of order, if none of the money is spent from this fund for necessary repairs...
But we have an encumbered balance.
Right, but you're just adding it all up and not, and not considering that there may be expensive repairs that happen, and then you won't have that total at the end of the year, but that's what...
Well, and then there's, there's the monthly, there's a debt payment that we have to pay down on the existing debt for the wastewater treatment plant when we made the most recent upgrade, which wasn't that recent ago, it was 2015, 16, which was a significant investment, that was $20 million over time, and then to the point that was just mentioned, you know, it, it may look healthy now, but all it takes is a sewer line break somewhere in the city, and all of a sudden, we have to start encumbering money from that to sit there and rebuild a sewer line, whether it's a large one or a small one, whatever. Plus, we have the new sewer extension, I shouldn't say sewer extension, we have the sewer project that ran along the bike path and, as well as the sewer that's running underneath the river, tying into the main trunk that's coming into the wastewater treatment plant. So, we have significant debt on that, too, because, again, it's aging infrastructure, as we all recognize, and for engineering and public works to stay on top of making sure that we have adequate sewage capacity to bring that septic into the wastewater treatment plant, plus pay down the debt. I mean, it looks healthy now, but we still have debt that we've got to pay on that. The other thing, too, just to mention this, this 1% that we're talking about, you know, in comparison to 3% last year, and was it 3% the year before that, you know, for, whatever it was, it was 3% last year, you know, we're starting to think a little bit differently in what we should be raising them, you know, to a lesser amount than what we had to in the past. We had a whole formula laid out, and this is going back in the Wayback Machine for myself, but when we laid out the entire spreadsheet on our debt service back in 2016 for the 2015, 16 sewer plant renovations that were made, significant upgrades, you know, we knew looking forward in time, over the course of the next basically 20 years out, that we were going to have to see increases. There were some large ones, there was a period of time where it was 8%, and then it dropped down to 6%, and then, you know, more recently, 3%. So, this 1% is probably what we're going to be seeing over the course of the next couple of years, to make sure that we can finalize that debt and get it out of our way.
Thank you, Mayor. To, to, you know, address Mr. Swank's point, though, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, we've been paying the sewer debt, and the, and the unencumbered balance is still that high, so the sewer debt payments are not going to be a new thing or something we're doing at the end of the year. It's been part of the monthly payments, and you're, I think, your point, Mr. Swank, is that there's still a healthy balance there.
Oh, very healthy, yeah, yeah, and I'm excited about the 1%. Don't get me wrong there, but I just want to point out the fact that we are healthy, and we have no breakdowns, we don't even be healthy at the end of the year. No pun intended.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from city council on the sewer rates? Okay, moving on, Section 5.04.09, Cost of Sewer Connection. We currently have in our code a $3,000 per equivalent EPA residential unit, plus labor and costs for installation of new sanitary sewer taps and connections, and the administration is suggesting a addition to this code fee that states, "Or, when a new development is unclear about the occupancy use of the building, and it is not possible to calculate equivalent single-family home, the administration may choose to apply the following schedule. As with the equivalent single-family home method, credit may be granted for existing uses." I won't go over this, but I'll ask Mr. Chiki to explain.
So, currently, our code does not have a lot of flexibility when we have projects that don't have a clear end-use. So, imagine a spec building, for example, the formula currently uses occupancy, known ideas into the formula. So, if you're building a spec building that has a certain number of offices, you'd assume a certain number of people occupying those spaces. Let's say that use is instead manufacturing, and you're going to have X number of manufacturing workers, or a type of, a type of use that's different, it becomes very difficult to figure out that calculation based on the EPA calculation, because they use like gathering space, church, church of certain occupancy, has a certain number of classrooms, and a certain number of offices, and a certain number of restrooms, and becomes more difficult when you have quantities that are less known. So, an example would be a memorial health system built their building on Columbus Road, their first two levels, they have known uses with, in that, in that health center for, you know, emergency room and those kinds of things. Well, those are fairly simple. Their top level is currently unoccupied, they don't have a very clear idea of what they're going to use it for, they might have an idea, but it may change as they complete that development. We use the calculation that we had at the time to figure out their capacity fees, but it would look a little bit differently, knowing now that they don't have as clear a use for, for some of that space, and that's kind of the idea, is to provide some flexibility in that, and something that we can provide for developer and users, so they can have a better idea of what the costs are actually going to be. It's kind of one of those, tell us what you're going to do, and they're not exactly sure, and they say, "Well, how much is it going to cost?" "Well, tell us what you're going to do." And we could, and so that's, that's the, the idea here with that, that portion of this change.
Thank you, Mr. Chiki, and I know that the chart that was developed was based on research that was done and calculations from the city of Athens, and for the public, I'll just note that there is also an additional paragraph under the chart recommended by the administration. Note on fire suppression taps. If a building requires a larger tap due to fire suppression, the water capacity fee shall be one-half of the rate shown above, and the sewer capacity fee shall be based upon the size of the domestic water tap needed if fire suppression were not being installed. We don't want to penalize, obviously, safety systems, including fire suppression. Are there any comments from the public on this proposed change to our code fees? Seeing none, city council, any comments or questions on this proposed fee change, addition, really? Yes, members Spianis?
I just want to mention that, based on, again, my conversation earlier, I think that this is a really good change. I mean, I think we're going to see a lot more of this kind of thing, and it's good to have a strategy to deal with it.
Thank you, members Spianis. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, moving on to Section 7.05.18C, Contractor Bags. These are for metered bags. When a contractor needs to use parking spaces, contractor bags shall cost $10 per day, and that is an increase of $2 from the current fee of $8 per day. Andrew?
It's fairly straightforward. We have a number of uses for parking spaces uptown. A lot of times, this is happening in the summer when we have a lot of construction happening. It's, the program, the application is really for loading, unloading, and active construction, so vehicles that are directly associated with the, with construction, not for storage parking or convenience parking, where some entity wants to rent a meter for eight or 10, or post $10, so they can store a vehicle there for the convenience of, of an employee or for some other program that's going on. It's really meant for contractor construction work.
Thank you. Members of the public, any comments or questions on this fee proposal change? Members of city council, any comments or questions? Member Swank?
I'm going to have, to have some help on this. I went to the airport and back today to get a chance to get uptown. Our parking meters, we currently enforce them from what hour to what hour, Monday through Saturday. I know it goes to 6 o'clock, I think, on the back end, what about the...
7:00 PM, I believe.
7:00 PM?
And is it 7:00 AM? I'm not sure.
7:00 PM, I believe.
8:00 AM? I trust the...
Eight to seven.
Number to my right.
Eight to seven, that's, that's 11 hours. If we issue a bag for someone for the day, the paid day, that's 11 hours, and in a high-intensity zone, we multiply 11 times a dollar twenty-five... paid day, that's 11 hours. And in a high intensity zone, we multiply 11 times $1.25. That's almost, what, $14? Wouldn't we want to make the bag fee the same as the potential occupancy of that? Because when that white bag goes on, law-abiding citizens avoid it.
Are you asking Council or the administration?
That would be a recommendation I would make. Somebody do the math real quick. 11 times $1.25.
No, you're right. And I'm not opposed to that. We've done that in the past. If you remember, that's by and large where, I don't want to get on this path, but I'm going to say it. That's where the vending rates came from as well back in the day. It was based upon revenue generated at that parking metered space. And so again, you know, from my vantage point, Councilmember Swank, I'm fine with adjusting that. You know, it's a little more work on our end, which is fine. It's just going, okay, the high-use spaces, they could be what the meter rate is per hour, per day.
It'd be 13.75 right up to 14. One way to relieve the responsibility on your office, Mr. Mayor, and I respect that, just make it 14 for all of them. Because it is a real convenience. And hopefully by allowing that convenience, we can speed up some of these projects and get our customers and citizens back uptown patronizing the businesses.
Do we have any research on what similar cities do with the contractor bag issue? Any comments or questions about this or about Member Swank's proposal to make all contractor bags $14? We're just discussing. Member Wood?
I agree that the call should closer. I would suggest maybe a slight reduction in cost from the total just to make it a point of, you know, if I'm a contractor, maybe I'll just say, oh, run out and pay the meter every hour or whatever. It's kind of like a bulk rate reduction for booking it, as you will. Incentivize them to go ahead and do it instead of try and game the system and game it out. So maybe something like 12 bucks. Not that that's a huge difference, but you know, slight reduction from paying for the whole day just to...
Members' Be honest?
My only hesitation is that I've heard that there's some concern from contractors that we are a difficult city to deal with. So I want to make sure that other cities are doing comparable things because I do want to make sure that we have a comfortable relationship with contractors. So I think it's a great idea. I just think it's a good idea to check with other cities.
Any other comments or questions? Member Thomas?
I think the rate was generally considered to be on the eight hours, not the full 11 hours. Typically contractors aren't working 8 to 7. They might work before 8:00 AM but until 5:00 PM. So if we had meters, if we were going to allow bags to go beyond 5:00, that could cost more. That's more work on your end though. But I don't necessarily think it's the worst idea. I just, that is where the $8 to $10 came from.
That's a good point, Member Thomas. For like a dumpster, it's going to be there, you know what I mean?
Yeah, 24, yeah.
But that's a good point. Member Swank?
And I agree with Jessica, but on the other hand, that bag goes on, that bag goes on. And once we get to the 7 o'clock time, that bag's still on there. And once we get to the 5 o'clock, it's still on there. So yeah, I just think, you know, 13.7, make it 14 bucks, that's what it is. It's the cost of doing business. These are not mom-and-pop organizations coming up here making pennies in profit, unfortunately, so many of these places because we have so few local contractors or out-of-town contractors taking the money with us. And I don't think doing business in Athens difficult would be a $14 bag tag. Protesters and New Orleans-style parades, that might be another thing, but we're talking about a $14 bag charge here.
Any other comments or questions from City Council on this issue? It's a good discussion. Maybe we'll see some research and proposals can be brought up when it's read for the first time. Section 7.05.22a, city pay parking rates. Let's see. The addition of the paragraph. All right, this is in section, is in Title 7. Single space short-term parking meters designated for meal delivery pickup-drop-off shall be not more than a 10-minute time limit and shall have an annual permit fee paid by the adjacent requesting businesses set by the Service Safety Director based on estimated usage and existing rates and the parking zone in which the space is to be designated paid to the Parking Enforcement Office. Mr. Cheeky?
So this is an item that was raised by a couple of businesses uptown about a need for more flexibility related to meal delivery services. Our code currently doesn't have anything that really addresses shorter-than-short-term parking where a driver is pulling up long enough to pick up something and then take off. It's similar to a DoorDash, not endorsing DoorDash or anything, it's just a reality. And so what typically happens with those meal delivery pickup and drop-offs is vehicles that are parked in non-designated spaces or in the lane of travel. And so what we're attempting to do here is address two things. The first is the need for the flexibility with meal delivery services. And the second is to prevent that, those flashers go in and cars parked in the lane of travel for those periods of time, both from a safety issue and from a need to keep traffic moving throughout the uptown area. And so that's kind of the nexus of that. I'll leave it.
Mr. Cheeky, can you give us an indication either of area of Court Street or even businesses that might be looking into this?
So I'll give you two examples. The first is the New Chicken Place on the north end of Court Street. They have a space in front of their business. They raise the issue of more than short-term parking in front of the business for meal delivery services. Currently, we have witnessed those pickup-and-drop-off services parked either blocking the alley adjacent to that business or on Court Street, blocking the lane of travel. Certainly if they can find a spot somewhere uptown, they could park, run down the street to the place, get the food, run back and take off. And so attempting to do something a little bit more efficient there and provide some additional relief by having, if the business wants it and they see the need and they can do it to pay that annual fee based on a calculation with the hours that they'd want it, the length of time, those kinds of things. But it would be limited to essentially one space in that general area. So conceivably, more than one business could team up together to use that space. And so that's example down on Court Street. Another example, earlier in the morning and during the day is on Union Street, Starbucks. So we have people that pull up there, they do the same thing. There's no alley to pull into in front of there. They park right in the middle of the street, run in, grab the order, then run out. So see a scenario like that during the day and in the morning when we have more traffic coming in and out through that area. So that's the idea that was raised by a business owner.
Great, thank you very much. Public, any comment or questions on this proposed addition? City Council, yes, Member Wood?
Yeah, I'm thrilled to see this. I heard first from Kevin McNamara, who owns Hotbox, about this idea. I think it's a great idea. I'm so happy to see the administration bring it up. I think it's a great sort of confluence of business and community working together. So that's exceptional. My questions, one, what would that fee be? Should we have that in this segment as we're talking about fees? And two, just for general information, how would enforcement work for that? For example, how do we know who the dashers are that are using it? What's the like rules around that? How does parking enforcement deal with it, et cetera?
Sure. Those are both valid questions. So the, to answer the first part, the fee structure is based on whether it's in a low, medium, high-intensity zone, the number of hours where that entity would want to see it be delivered. For example, that same business on North Court doesn't need it in the morning and doesn't need it probably in the early afternoon, but certainly later in the day, going into the evening, during dinnertime is a time if they'd want it. So we look at how many hours they'd want it and multiply that by the number of days of the week that they want to use it and that intensity zone. And so I can't give you a direct like, it's going to cost $200. It would really be based on that individual parking space and a calculation of how much they want it. The rest of the time, they'd revert back to regular parking, just like we have the vending spaces. Those spaces aren't vending 24 hours a day. Those are during particular hours. The same is true with loading zones. We treat it similarly. To answer the question about how we would enforce it, part of this is, you know, while parking enforcement is on duty, but it would be more or less complaint-based by the business owner if somebody's parked up there for an extended period of time. And they recognize that there's a vehicle there in that space that they've essentially paid to remain free for meal delivery pickup and drop-off, then we would send somebody down there. If it's outside of parking enforcement time, that does fall to the police department to do. And that's something that they already do and we have challenges with parking, including putting meter bags on and those kinds of things. Police department does that.
Member Claude Feltzer?
I also think this is a good idea and hopefully it will help these businesses. But I'm curious, it seems like this is primarily, well, correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems like this would be especially beneficial for meal pickup, for people who are picking it up to go deliver. I wonder if there are any places in town, Bromley Hall comes to mind because I've had people, you know, stop right in front of me and had to swerve, where there are a lot of deliveries and if it might make any sense to do something similar at a place that has a really high number of food deliveries.
I think it would be dependent on who the payer is for that. Certainly there are instances where we have apartments above on those streets. And if a property owner saw the need and wanted to incorporate that, certainly they could work that out. But as far as, you know, Bromley Hall, which is owned by Haun University, that'd be a different type of discussion about parking use.
Okay.
Member Thomas?
Yeah, I actually had a lot of questions and sat and talked to Mr. Cheeky last week about this. I appreciate the addition of the permission of adjacent businesses so that it has to be a, you know, a community or, you know, your neighbors have to give you permission. It would be great to add that into the language somewhere. So that's solidified. Otherwise, yeah, I would, as a cautionary comment for the people that ask for it, it's going to be a lot of headache. And if you pay any attention to loading zones, it's, I have a feeling this is going to end up in a frustration, frustrated and disappointed result. But, you know, if it helps, that'd be great. You know, I understand what they're saying, but loading zones all day long are full of people who are not semis. So just so they are aware of that when they go in and have realistic expectations on what the city can do. Yeah. And when Mr. Cheeky and I were talking too, this is, we talked about this is if a business requests it and their neighbors permit it and want to work with them on it. So there's not going to be these all over uptown because we need to keep an even smattering of parking spaces.
Mayor Patterson? Okay, Member Swank?
Couple questions. How many of these do we currently have, these 10 or 20-minute spots?
I'm glad you brought that up because I was going, that's what I was going to get
We're on the same wavelength tonight.
Here we are. Councilmember Swank, I believe we have three, maybe four. We used to have more, so that's my segue, because there was a real learning curve on the city side with these 10-minute parking spaces, maximum 20-minute, because the intent was to place them without anybody asking us, by the way, in front of businesses to where for someone to run in, grab a cup of coffee, back when people read paper newspapers, they'd get their newspaper. We had one, and I believe we still have one down by Court Street Coffee. We have one across from Donkey. We had one that made a lot of sense. Why in the world would you have one there? And that's where maybe this, having consensus with other businesses around you, because we actually had one that wasn't that far from a beauty salon and a tattoo parlor. And unless you really want a 10-minute tattoo,
10-minute tattoo.
It was not correctly placed. And we recognized that as we were doing this. This is going back about three years ago, maybe even four years ago. I did work with a lot of the businesses to where for someone to run in quickly and not have to pay the full hour to be there when they just were going to dash in for 10 minutes, grab a cup of coffee and back on the road again. So I think we have three, maybe four now, but we also had to move them around. But again, with this model, to your point, Councilmember Thomas, I think it's perfect to set it up to where you've got to have buy-in from your commercial neighbors, you know, because you are dedicating the space for a shorter period of time for a parking meter.
Can I finish then?
Yeah, go ahead.
No, that's fine. So we know we have three now. Do we have a figure as to what the limit would be? How many of these we could have? A couple more questions. I got the answer there. We don't. Obviously signage is going to be very, very important, just like we have on the loading zones, Monday to Friday, 8 to 2. So we're going to have to have some unique signings. There's going to be some cost involved in that. Also, if the limit gets to be too big, we're going to catch hell because what people are going to perceive is you've reduced universal parking opportunities. So going back to the language, this language, the way it reads right now, shall have an annual permit fee paid by the adjacent requesting business. Forget the ES. I don't have to have permission the way this is written. That's the adjacent business to the parking spot. But without going uptown and walking Court Street, I would wager that many of those, and Member Thomas could probably tell us better than anyone, she has a business right on Court Street, many of those parking meters overlap multiple businesses. I don't know how many the spot is solely in front of a business. So that language has got to be cleaned up because the way it reads, fee paid by the adjacent requesting business. To me, that says the business adjacent to the spot. So I think we need to clean that up. And then the final thing here, how do we currently charge for parklets?
So parklets are two parts. It's a, there's an annual application fee and then there's a permitting fee.
Okay. So yeah, I think this is a good idea. It's just not Starbucks where they do it. They do the same thing at Kroger and really goof up the parking lot. Pull up, run in, get their Starbucks, you know, out in the middle of Kroger. But I think it's going to need some work in terms of the language and verbiage because what I heard a couple councilmembers say, and I think the mayor too, we kind of need a buy-in from the neighbors.
Member Wood?
Two other things that come up kind of separately. To Jessica's point, maybe we could do something to, there aren't that many semis delivering at any given time either, right?
There's a lot.
Could do something to let those also be used by the same services. Somebody could, you know, if you already have a loading zone spot, Somebody could, you know, if you already have a loading zone spot, you could have that as also a DoorDash or spot. Second, second point. I think that something that would both increase total revenue and reduce sort of park enforcement having to chase people, maybe there could be something along the lines of a DoorDash or sort of prepaid parking pass. Something that'll let you have prepaid parking. I'm a dasher, I'm going to have to go and pay 20 meters a day sort of thing. Instead of doing that, I could pay the city X amount, kind of like the bag idea, which would effectively let you sort of pay in advance for parking in all these temporary spots without having to go and actually pay every time. That makes it easier for tracking for taxes, makes it easier to actually comply, produces, you know, would maybe do some other things. I don't know what that would look like, probably require a lot of work, but I think it'd be a cool way to sort of let people work within the system and increase revenue.
Thank you, member Wood. Any other comments or questions? Member Thomas.
What, are you asking if loading zones could then become these zones? Because there's a lot of semis until 2:00 PM, like a lot. And they need to be able to get in and deliver. Are you, are you suggesting that those would be shared? Because that's going to depend on the business that's requesting. Like Hot Box is going to have a very different time of day than the loading zones, eight to two, nine to two. But I think, reading this, I think it's not that they're paying the 10 minutes. It's that the businesses that agree mutually to have it pay the fee and then people that are picking up and dropping in just drop in. So there's not really a prepaid, I don't know how a prepaid semis do it or companies do it, but it's a very different system. Yeah, I think there's some work to be done that make this, to make this make sense and doable, along with some probably experience. It's probably going to be, looked a little different after a year.
Mr. Chicky, real quick, do you have a response?
Just to address the, having the delivery person or company pay, we did consider that, one of the challenges is that that's coming out of that delivery person's bottom line. The company's not going to, you know, DoorDash is a corporate entity, is not going to pay for that necessarily. It's going to come out of that DoorDashers' bottom line and they have razor thin margins as it is. So we did consider that, you know, the considerations if the business wants it and feels that it's important that they work that in as promotion for themselves.
Just, can I clarify both points?
Please.
To your, to your question, I'm saying if you, if you're Hot Box, you already have a loading zone up front and you want to dual rate it, basically. Yes, so you could dual rate it. To that point, I'm not saying that the dashers would pay for the whole space forever. I'm saying like, it's sort of a, kind of like EZ Pass in big cities, right? You have an EZ Pass tag that just gets scanned as you're going. And that would let you sort of park and just get scanned by the city and will charge you the amount done. You don't have to fight, you know, all the different things, carry all the quarters. And then it just, something like that. Not that they would pay the whole price. There's no reason, you know, that would be an insanely high cost. I'm saying like, instead of paying whatever they're paying in parking fees already.
Member Swank.
Up until this point, most of these things we've discussed have been very routine. And we talked about treating this whole fee thing as a single entity, a unit. But I have a feeling this item right here and maybe a couple more items coming up may need a lot more discussion and research and all of that. And I'm wondering if, so that we don't hold up the whole thing, many of these which determine the city's budget for the next year, water fees and things of that nature, that as we get into these things that we're going to require more work, that we pull these from the document, letting the majority of the document go through, get the fees in place. So when we do the budgeting process with the mayor and the auditor and council, we can move that along. This thing really here, this thing, this particular item really doesn't have a big impact on the city's budget. This is an additional thing we're going to be adding on as a convenience, hopefully to grow business, get people out of the middle lane. So I'm just wondering if we might want to consider, when we roll around the first reading, that we pull this thing out and treat it on its own as maybe one or two other things coming down the road. Because I hate to hold up the routine matters, the things, many of the things we've talked about already.
Thank you, member Swank. Other council members on this issue. Seeing that going on, section 7.05.26B, rates and regulations. This is for the parking garage. It is proposed that zero to one hours be $1 regardless of time. And let me, let me make sure the public knows that this is referencing a change to the parking garage instead of individual meters, but having a lift gate at the front where you will pay by time. So you'll get a ticket, like at any airport or a regular updated parking garage, and you will park and then you will pay as you exit. So this is zero to one hours, $1 regardless of how many minutes you were in, zero to one hours. One to 10 hours, $1 per hour for each hour or portion of hour thereafter, up to 10 hours. 10 to 24 hours is a day rate of $20. It resets to the hourly rate after 24 hours. $175 per month for a parking garage reserved space plus any transactional fees. $150 per month for parking garage non-reserved spaces plus any transactional fees per space. It's also added that the service safety director may introduce a commerce validation discount program to promote businesses in the uptown area. Mr. Chicky?
So I do want to note a couple of things. The first is the parking garage renovations, parking garage phase through that project. We did get a good bid two weeks ago. And so this has been a continuation. We've been discussing this since 2023. It's taken a little bit of time to get this together. And so we anticipate construction to begin in September and for that to include in December. Our intent with this is that the existing parking regulations stay in place and then they sunset at the time that the parking garage's new system becomes live. So we don't want either delay between the two or a gap. And so that's, that's the intent here is to get this in place prior to the parking garage's renovation being complete so that we can be started on day one and not be out of compliance with what our code says. The other note I would make on this is that the times and the criteria match what a great majority of regular old parking garages do. Our parking garage is kind of an antiquity in how we do things. And so we're trying to modernize it a little bit and make it a little bit easier for people to be able to come in and out. And also capture the actual use of the garage 24 hours a day. And so that's, that's what we're attempting to do here. The reserved, non-reserved spaces, those are, those are increases of $25 on each, each portion. And that is in part to help pay for the upgrades to the garage. And hopefully with additional usage and an updated system, we'll be able to capture more revenue as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chicky. Members of the public, anything to add to the parking garage new system fee structure? Members of, yes, member Claude Feltzer.
Just a clarification question. I know quite a few individuals who don't have credit cards. When we do this lifted gate thing, will still, will people still be able to pay with quarters if they want to?
Yes. So there'll be two standard pay kiosks that will take cash, credit cards, that kind of thing. You have a period of time when you pay at the kiosk to exit. And then in addition to that, let's say you didn't do that and you forgot and you made it all the way to the, to the gate. You can pay by card at the gate as well. So you essentially have three opportunities to pay before exiting.
Okay.
Other, yes, I'm going to go down to member Spianas first, thank you.
The last time we talked about parking fees, I brought this up and so I'm going to bring it up again. And that is, I'm concerned about the service workers and where they can park and if there's any possible arrangement for businesses to have some parking someplace, if not in the parking garage, somewhere else that could be affordable for people who work uptown. I think that's worth exploring because, you know, we have an issue with people that are making low wages.
Thank you, member Spianas. Member Swank?
I wanted to pick up on something that Mr. Chicky said. I've had three emails on this in the last two days. There are many people in this community that have what we call the parking smart card. And I'm seeing some blank faces. I didn't know about it either till a 90-year-old woman told me about it. You can go to the utility billing office and buy a little card. And when you go to the parking meter, you put it in and when you leave, you put it in again. And if you don't use up all the time you put in, you get it back. Those still work. However, I talked to Tina in the utility billing office today. They got new PCs, the new software doesn't support that old system. So you can no longer go in and recharge that card. Now, we could have paid 1,500 bucks for a system that we'd only use for three or four months, which made no sense. But once your card, for those of you who have a smart card, runs out this year, it's done. So I would respectfully ask perhaps from the administration, if we could get that announcement out, because I've gotten three emails in the last two days about my smart card doesn't work. What's going on?
Okay. We can absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Get that out. Member Wood?
One, the parking smart card thing sounds like the EZ Pass idea. And if so, I wish I had one.
Too late.
Too late, great. So bring it back, I guess. Two, is there a cap on what we would do for the 20 hours a day? Is there a point? Because, I mean, some folks, you know, there have been points in my life where I was driving a car where after a couple of days, you just own my car. And I'm never getting that thing because 20 bucks a pop, that pretty quickly gets ahead of what some of my cars cost. So, you know, is there, is it, will there be a cap on that number?
So it does reset every, every day back to the hourly rate. So if it took you a couple of days, you know, if you have it in there for 10 hours or more, it's going to, it's going to pop at 20 bucks, but you're in there. It will reset at the time that you have hit 24 hours and go back to the hourly rate. So we're not going to, you know, charge another $20 if you're in there for a day and a half.
Mr. Wood is asking if he leaves his car there for 10 days, is he paying the daily fee every day? Or is it cap off at?
On that blazer that I had, it would be like five.
Yeah, I think you are. And we have had cars that have been.
In the parking garage, so therefore, yes. You are now paying $200 to get your, what'd you say, a $20 car?
It was a $500 car, thank you, sir.
Well, no, no, no. That was a slight against you. I'm just, I, that's what I thought I heard you say. I want to know where you buy cars. When my daughters become drivers, I'll buy a $20 car.
It wasn't very reliable. Start without a key, got stolen a couple of times. It was great.
Member Thomas, something did?
I just had a lot of questions about the commerce validation program. How it would work, it's pretty vague. I really don't want to put something into an ordinance that doesn't have any real detail or plan that people can see. I know it's a new system coming in and it's a new program with a lot of flexibility, but I would rather wait and add that in once we have the program up and running and we've seen the gate and we've seen how it works than put it in now at the beginning.
Member Chicky, do you have a response there? It does just say may introduce, so does it really belong in there now? It's an excellent point by member Thomas. Did you want to, member Swank?
I think it's a great, I think you made a very good point. Also, I would assume if Mr. Stone came up with such a program, we're talking about money, it would have to be something that would come through council in terms of what the fees and amounts and all that would be, correct?
It would have to be in the code.
Yeah.
So that's why, yeah.
Anyone else want to address this immediately? I'll ask Mr. Chicky, you want to respond to that, or mayor?
So again, as the deputy service safety director had mentioned, this is getting things in place before we get the gates, you know, the gating system that'll be on the parking garage. To do something like this is nothing new. There are cities all across the United States, for that matter, that their parking garage has a validation discount program that you can use. Most notably for me, when I go to the Ohio Municipal League meetings, the parking garage is validated, but the payer for that validation card that you end up using is the Ohio Municipal League. So there is, will be a fee associated with being able to use this validation system. I'll give you another example locally, was the event that took place just over this past weekend with bounty on the bricks. And if the organizer chose to have a, you know, to pay for the validation of said event, it could certainly be helpful. That's assuming, this is what we're talking about, is the, the service safety director may introduce a commerce validation discount program to promote business in the uptown area, correct?
That is correct. I think we have some questions as to what does that mean? What is a commerce validation? To me, if I, am I going into a local business like Brennan's and they're stamping it? And then when I go back to the parking garage, I'm getting some discount somehow?
So the way it works is the business or the entity, or I'll use the city as an example in a second, would essentially pre-purchase that validation and it would be set up as an account. So let's say you're a business uptown, you would like to be part of validation to incentivize people to come in and shop in your business and that kind of thing. Somebody buys something in your business, requests a validation. You affix a sticker to the ticket. And when you exit, you'd get a discount and would record that. And then monthly, that business would be invoiced for the amount of validations that had happened over that previous month. So let's say you had 20 people that had their tickets validated. It would be for the amount of that validation, whether that's, you know, knocking 50% off of the cost of that parking period or 50 cents or what have you. And then there'd be an additional processing fee for the business to participate in that, essentially. So it's not a, an additional cost on the garage or drain in city funds. It really is something that's a payment within the boundaries of what we, what we have. The other couple of examples, you know, people came in here this evening and likely parked in the parking garage. By having a validation program, we could validate for people that come in and participate in their right to be at the city council meeting. Which right now, you know, parking garage is 24 hours a day. So anybody that parked in the garage, I hope you paid your, paid for your time. The third example I'll use is the Athena Movies Theater uptown. And so an example like that, if they're, have a showing to be competitive in the market with another movie theater that's just outside of town, providing a validation could incentivize people to come in and spend their money at the theater uptown as opposed to one outside of the local area.
Thank you, Mr. Chicky. So if I understand correctly, functionality wise, the reader would read the sticker? That's how it would know to do the discount?
It notates that and it's attached to whatever business purchased it's, based on the serial number on that.
Thank you, that, that explains a lot to me.
The barcode.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on this item from city council? No, moving on. 9.01.01, animals at large, section E. First offense originally was $20, it's being changed to $75. Second offense, $30, being changed to $100. Third offense, $40, being changed to $125. Fourth offense is a minor misdemeanor and a fourth offense is being changed to $150. And a fifth offense is being added that will equal $175. City administration, do you have anything to add?
So the intent here is to align this particular section of code with the other three sections that have the same sort of citation structure. And so a portion of this has to do with, if your dog gets loose and poops in my yard, you get a $20 ticket. you get a twenty-dollar ticket. I could get a seventy-five-dollar ticket for having unsanitary conditions in my yard. And so, from an equity standpoint, it would seem fair that, um, that they should be on even footing. Now, of course, uh, if, if I can prove that, um, my unsanitary condition is directly because my neighbor's dog is getting loose, I would, I would certainly appeal that. But, uh, it, it would be consistent with what we have in other areas of code about similar things. And to have an escalating offense rather than a minor misdemeanor, um, as that increases. This does not have to do with dog bites or vicious animals or anything like that. This is, uh, exclusively related to animals at large. So, you know, if, uh, your Yorkie gets out, um, and, and is running around, that's, that's at, at large. If your, uh, maybe your chihuahua gets out and it's biting people, that's not what this is about. You could get an animals-at-large citation, which you probably would also get a vicious animal, which is, um, a criminal offense.
Thank you, Mr. Chiki. Does the public have anything to ask? Comment on this proposed change, City Council. Member Reisner?
Only apply to dogs?
No, animals at, animals at large. I'm using dogs as an example.
I see, so...
Uh, if you say cats, if you can catch them.
I was thinking more like alligators.
Uh, sure, alligators.
Okay, pythons, that sort of thing.
Could be at large.
Anything else, Mr. Reisner? Members Swank?
I'll think of something. In the last two years, how many, uh, twenty-dollar animals have we had?
I, I, I doubt that there have, have been any, if, if I'm aware of any. It's really an alignment for code.
This is silly. Absolutely silly. I go out to get the mail, and I happen to leave my door open this far. My dog runs out and runs around the thing, and somebody in a position of authority happens to be coming back buying, I'm out seventy-five dollars. This is silly legislation. This is a solution looking for a problem. And I don't care about alignment. When's the last time we fined somebody twenty dollars for poop in their yard?
We do fine people fairly well.
When is the last time we did it?
Unsanitary conditions.
When's the last time we fined somebody for poop in their yard?
I can get that information for you.
Again, this is silly.
Member Wood?
Uh, respectfully, I very much disagree. We get neighbors that let their dogs out once or twice a week. It's running around. They're yelling at them, chasing it down. I actually totally disagree. The same, it's the same person every week. They let their dogs off, and then they're out there at 5:00 AM screaming in my yard. So actually, I, I think it's great. And similarly, I do know that, um, from Lisa's report, we did charge at least one person with animal at large last year.
One person, in a city of twenty-three thousand, six hundred people.
Had I known that this existed, I would have asked for another.
Yeah.
Any other comments before we move back to Mr. Swank for comments from the City Council? Mr. Swank?
There's a huge difference between your dog getting out and letting your dog out. I have three little granddaughters that would have a heart attack if every time somebody came by and one of their cats is out. That, that, this is crazy. You know, this is the kind of stuff when people in other towns say, "What in the hell are they doing in Athens?" And, uh, you already know how I'm gonna vote if this comes up.
Any other comments or questions? Member Claude Feltre?
Maybe what we need is a definition of "at large." I assume if a dog is out in its own yard, that's not at large. But if it's off of its own property, or, or could you clarify my understanding, please?
So, so my, my understanding, we, one, I need to look at the definition that exists in code currently of what it is, uh, to be an animal at large. My common understanding is if it is, uh, uh, off of your property and, and roaming about, uh, it could be an animal at large.
Yeah.
Mayor Patterson?
At the sake of offending any of my counterparts across the United States right now, there are municipalities that have animals DNA tested, and therefore, they, they collect their, someone else's dog's excrement in your yard and take it to the lab and have it DNA. I'm not kidding, um, to the tune of five hundred dollars for a first offense, and then it goes up from there. So I, I understand where you're coming from, Councilmember Swank. But trust me, there are more interesting programs that are out there. I won't say they're crazy. They're just more interesting programs.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yes, Members Spianis?
Yeah, I do want to say that we had a dog problem in our neighborhood, and it was, it was really bad. Um, you know, if you say, "Oh, my dog got out," well, okay, maybe once or twice. But this was a consistent thing, and it was scaring people. They never bit anybody that we know of, but it was scaring people and scaring little kids. And, and it happened so frequently that it became a thing, and, uh, we tried to deal with it, which eventually we did. But it was quite, um, upsetting to the neighborhood. So I think there are circumstances where you do have to address this.
Thank you, Members Spianis. Any other comments or questions on this proposed change? Thank you. Moving on to section nine point one zero point zero five, cutting weeds. This is simply to move this portion, uh, into Title I. So there's no fee change proposed here. It's just placing this, uh, in the proper place in Title I. Mr. Chiki, anything to add?
Not, nothing to add on that one.
Thank you. Uh, public, anything to add on moving this into Title I? Thank you. Members of City Council, any problems with doing what we're supposed to be doing? Okay, thank you. Uh, section nine point one two point zero three, opening permit required. Uh, the current fee is one hundred dollars, and the proposed, um, uh, fee is one twenty-five. This is, um, uh, an opening permit into the right-of-way. Um, this is to update Title I. Current fee is one hundred dollars, and this would be one twenty-five. Administration?
This is simply to, uh, related to curb cuts. It's currently a hundred, and proceeds to increase to twenty-five.
Thank you. Members of the public, anything to add on curb cut fee increase? Members of City Council? Seeing none. Moving on to temporary dumpsters. This would be new to code and would read as follows. No dumpsters, moving pods, or construction trailers may be set on sidewalks or public streets without first being permitted by the Service Safety Director or their designee. The fees for such permit shall be provided by separate ordinance. Title one point zero three code fees established would include fifteen dollars for temporary dumpster, moving pod, or construction trailer per week. Meter fees may apply if parked in a metered parking space. Mr. Chiki, or Administration?
This is a, this is an add-on. So currently, we have, uh, what I would call a knowledge permit. Essentially, uh, we have, uh, contractors and those wishing to place, uh, dumpsters and, and such in the right-of-way for periods of time, and, um, uh, there's currently no fee for that. And so you'll have situations where someone, especially in construction, may leave a dumpster placed for months at a time. And, um, on the one hand, we want to, uh, help facilitate rehabilitation and cleanup and construction and those types of activities. On the other hand, um, there is a cost for administering the, the permit. I'm the person that does the administering of these permits and coordinating to, uh, to clear the space in order to drop these as well. So typically what happens is someone wants to place a dumpster for a period of time to do some sort of cleanup. We have to, um, get in contact with the street department in order to put up no parking signage. Parking enforcement then, uh, ensures that nobody's parked there at the time that the trailer or the dumpster or whatever is placed. And really, we're just trying to offset the, the cost of what's currently just a knowledge permit that has, has no, no real teeth to it. You can, you know, certainly, people have placed dumpsters and all sorts of other things, and we find out about it after the fact. And then we say, "Well, in the future, you need a permit," and then next time they do it again. See, in the future, you need a permit. There's, there's no real cost to, to doing that.
Thank you. Members of the public, any comments or questions on this proposed addition? Members of City Council? Members Spianis?
Just a little quick question. In terms of enforcing something like this, could there be like a sticker on the, on it or something so that people would know that they had done the right thing? And, you know what I mean? Like something? I think that would make it easier than...
It, it's certainly something that could be done. Currently, uh, when you get the permit, you, you get a physical copy of that permit and, um, you know, are required to, uh, produce that upon request to the code office or parking enforcement or the police or whoever. And they have an order to, to remove that, um, if it, if it has been permitted. We typically try to work with people, um, and ensure that it's in compliance. We also want to make sure that whatever placement happens is far enough to the edge of the right-of-way to allow a lane of travel or not on the sidewalks. That happens fairly often, especially in neighborhoods where somebody wants to drop, uh, a dumpster or one of these moving pods, and they'll place it right in the middle of the sidewalk, and now there's no access. And so, um, then we've got to order them to move it and, and track that. You know, again, there is no, there is no fee associated with it currently. So, um, try to address just the administrative costs, and, uh, we're not trying to break people's backs over trying to do the right thing.
Members Swank?
So there's a step ahead of me. I would like to see language added to this that requires a conspicuous and prominently posted sticker on the dumpster. For example, over on the Far East Side, I think it was Mary, two, two streets down from you, we had a dumpster set there for months. Uh, the chances of somebody from the city administration, no offense, coming out there and this, that, and the other. But if you've got that sticker on it, because so much of what happens in the city is complaint-driven, the neighborhood can police it and make sure it gets taken care of. So I'd like to see that language added, that it needs to be a standard sticker. You, you pay your money, fill out the form, and that sticker has to go on the, the container.
Other comments or questions from City Council? Moving on to another, um, proposed new section of code, section nine point one two point one eight H, temporary street alley sidewalk closure. Twenty-five dollars for temporary closure of any street, alley, or sidewalk per day.
So this is in the, uh, in the same way as the temporary dumpsters. We do get, uh, a, a, quite a large number of requests for temporary street, alley, and sidewalk closures. This is, um, all over, all over town. Uh, this is not to be confused with, uh, uh, work-in-the-right-of-way permits. This is primarily a, a contractor that needs to close a portion of a road or a sidewalk to do some sort of work. It happens uptown constantly. And, uh, again, this is a, currently, it's a, it's a knowledge permit. It's not, there's no fee associated with it. And so, uh, for one, we want to ensure that people have a proper maintenance of traffic plan, especially if there has to be a detour or, uh, or alternate route for pedestrians. Uh, we try to work with, uh, any contractor or anyone that needs to, uh, close an alley or sidewalk or street for that purpose and ensure that they have the proper signage and, and maintenance of traffic plan.
Mr. Chiki, on that note, will you read the paragraph that's also, goes along with this, if you have it? If not, I can.
Yeah, it's in the other section here. Uh, no temporary closure for any street, alley, or sidewalk may be allowed unless permitted by the Service Safety Director or their designee. And a temporary closure request shall have, include a pedestrian and vehicle maintenance of traffic plan and follow the manual on uniform traffic control devices. Sidewalks closed for extended periods must be appropriately barricaded and signed. Special event street closures are not regulated by this section. The fees for such permit shall be provided by separate ordinance.
Thank you. Public, anything to add? Um, questions, comments? Members of Council? Members Swank?
Counsel, uh, something near and dear to Mr. Reisner's heart. Counsel approves street closures. Does that apply to those?
This is different than special event street closures. Uh, these street closures are, uh, are typical related to construction, which is, uh, under the purview of the Service Safety Director.
No, 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 no. I'm talking about, uh, like, um, uh, let me pick one. Oh, the thing we just had. Oh, no, 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 that, that's got to be city-sponsored. Uh, Juneteenth.
That's a, that's a special event street closure. It's, uh, it's established through, uh, through a separate mechanism.
Okay, so this doesn't apply to those?
It does not apply, and that is explicit in the, the language of the addition in that title.
So these temporary, so walk us through the, the logistics of a street closure. Someone of this type you're talking about here, someone requests it, who closes the street?
So it's, uh, it's the, the contractor that does the, the closing of the street.
They put out the barricades and stuff?
They put out the barricades. They're responsible for, uh, procuring and, and having those devices. Uh, they submit a plan in advance that gets approved. Uh, an example would be, uh, we recently had a crane that was placed, uh, uh, on the street uptown, which caused Court Street to be closed for several hours. It was the, on the contractor to, to close the street, put together a maintenance of traffic plan that was approved. Ensure that they have appropriate safety staffing to, to do that and then reopen the street. These are typically for shorter periods of time, um, you know, a few hours. Although we do have, uh, situations with sidewalk closures that are, uh, longer in nature. Sometimes related to actual replacement of, uh, of the sidewalk or remediation in a certain area. And those may have a, a longer closure period. Another example would be, uh, when, uh, certain business uptown needed to replace their, uh, their water line and, uh, and do that. And they had to actually open up the, the, the street and place plates and those kinds of things. So there were several days where they were closed, uh, a lane was closed for, uh, hours at a time while they were doing that work and then reopen in the evening.
Okay, so what I was getting at, these do not require city personnel?
Not typically. This is to process the, the fee associates to process the permit and to, uh, ensure that there's compliance.
Because if it did require city personnel, twenty-five dollars probably wouldn't cover the cost of that lost labor. So, so if it doesn't require city personnel, then we should, then it looks pretty good.
Member Claude Feltre?
Deputy Safety Service Director, um, you've alluded a couple of times to there being language in the part "we can't see" about the need to provide an alternative walkway if a sidewalk is closed. Would you be willing to read us that language?
I could, I could read that again for you. "Any temporary closure request shall include a pedestrian and vehicle maintenance of traffic plan and follow the manual on uniform traffic control devices." Uh, the manual on traffic, uh, uniform traffic control devices is a, is a national standard for, uh, types of signage, how placements occur, uh, reflective markers, cones, barrels, you have it.
I wonder if for the, um, that sounds like that's really good language to use for that industry. But for regular people, I wonder if it would be good to have a sentence, or part of a sentence even, that explicitly says that if a sidewalk is closed, the expectation is to provide an alternative walkway?
So it says sidewalks closed for extended periods must be appropriately barricaded and signed. Is that, are you wanting additional refinement to that?
Uh, I would just really like to have a, a mention in there that there's a requirement to, um, create an alternative walkway so that a sidewalk is not closed down to pedestrians.
Sure.
If that is in fact what happens. I think it should state it. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Member Reisner?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to jump onto what, uh, Councilwoman Claude Feltre was mentioning there. I can, I can see a situation where you have someone who's in a wheelchair and trying to get down the sidewalk, and now it's barricaded, there's signs up, and it's all legally placard, and it says you can't go forward because the sidewalk is closed, but they're still stuck there because they can't move forward. How do they get around it? How do they get back to their journey? I mean, but what are we doing about that?
So a maintenance of traffic plan does include detour, uh, a designation for, for a detour, and that route, uh, is to be, uh, accessible. It's not always the, the most straightforward route, but it is, uh, through the, the, the manual, uh, to, to follow, uh, the, the safest and, and most, uh, practicable route possible. So there are situations where, uh, a sidewalk would have to be closed completely with no access down it. And at that point, it would be, uh, assigned for, for a detour. And that's something that we already endeavor to, um, to include with any, any type of closure. To not only have just a sidewalk closed signed, but also a detour route that is, uh, that is, that is marked.
Thank you.
Any other? Yes, Members Spianis?
Well, I hesitate to bring this up, but I've, it's come up a number of times while I've been on council. And that is, so, we're out in a little neighborhood away, away from... been on council, and that is, so we're out in a little neighborhood away from, you know, downtown and all that, and you have a group of people who want to do a Halloween party, and they want to do it in the street and the sidewalk. If I read that, I would think, oh, that's something I could do. And you want to do it for two hours so the kids can do a little Halloween back and forth, that sort of thing? And there have been situations like that that have come up, and the city has said no. And I just wonder if that's something that we could do. Where I used to live in Pennsylvania, we did that regularly every year, as a matter of fact. We had the kids go up and down the street, and we had those little, you know, barricades you can get, and so they, police dropped them off. We didn't have to ask anybody. We didn't have to pay anything, but we were able to do that. And it seems like that would be another use of, you know, just a couple hours of something that a neighborhood far away from downtown, but some circumstance where you could make those little arrangements, do a little neighborly kind of thing. The West Side has asked for that a couple of times, and so I'm hoping that if this isn't the right place, if we could talk about that as an option.
Are you referencing like special events or something like that, which is under a different section, or this, which is purposeful closing of a sidewalk or a street or alley for construction purposes or?
But it doesn't say, did it say construction purposes? So that's why?
But the last, the last sentence, or the second-to-last sentence does say, "Special event street closures are not regulated by this section," in the amended section of 91218.
Okay, well.
And so it's not related to special events in this particular section here.
Okay, I hear that, but I'm wondering if there's an option to do that sort of in-between thing, not a big special event that requires a police and everything else, just a little neighborhood thing where it's a much, for its two hours, whatever, and it's a fun little thing to get the neighbors together, to do neighborly things, and to bring people out.
Mayor?
We do see things like that happening in the city, most notably Porch Fest, which I'm glad that the king of Morris Avenue is here.
I thought he said something.
I should say the governor, sorry.
Mayor.
The mayor. There we go. And, which was wildly successful, and everybody kind of knew how to do that. Let me also mention, you know, and this is not a surprise to anybody, you know, we're a university town, and so you can't, to do something like this means we can't prejudice anybody else from doing exactly what you're talking about, which means we've created a really interesting slope that we're trying to manage. And so I hear what you're saying. I think using the model that Rob Delatch has already kind of shown and proven on the Near East neighborhood, which was a fun event, but it didn't require closing, it didn't require anything. If anything, it required us being a partner to make sure we had more porta-jons available because there was a large number of people. But I, I just feel compelled to say that because it can't be just one little neighborhood thing somewhere. It has to be for.
Well, of course, and that's why I'm bringing it up. But, okay. If we're on tap, we're good.
Any other comments or questions on this piece here? Okay, moving on to Section 11.10.04. This is the annual fee for a contractor to register with the city of Athens. The current fee is $100, and the proposed fee is $125. This would be an update for Title I. Anything to add?
I couldn't find the last time we updated the contractor registration. We do have hundreds of contractors that register every year. We maintain a database of that, and we require that they provide insurance and show proof of that as part of their registration and any other information, such as their actual mailing address and ways to get ahold of them and that kind of thing. And so it's been a while, and we'd like to see that increase to match the maintenance of that program.
Thank you. Members of the public, anything to add? Members of council, updating registration for contractors. Moving on, Section 13.07.07, citation for littering violation. This would be an increase from $50 for the first offense to 75, 75 to 100, 100 to 125, 125 to 150, and 150 to 175, obviously mimicking the other changes that we've seen tonight of adding $25. Anything to add? Public, anything to ask about littering violation increase of $25? Members of council? Member Swank?
Is throwing gum on the sidewalk and throwing a cigarette butt on the sidewalk considered littering?
I suppose it could be.
It is, yeah.
Because we've got a serious gum problem uptown. And then the second question is, when is the last time anybody got cited for littering in the city of Athens? This is not stupid, so I'm going to qualify that right now, but it walked down the Chapman Jewelers side of Court Street, and it is embarrassing with the amount of gum.
So yes, depositing your gum on the sidewalk, that's littering. A cigarette butt, yes, that's littering. Cigarette butt issue, while it is far less than what it used to be, it's still not perfect with the deployment of cigarette butt bins in the uptown area, and that has helped quite a bit. Gum, on the other hand, that's an interesting challenge when it comes to people depositing gum. I agree with you. One of the things we have done, although it's not inexpensive, is with sidewalk replacement to do the brush aggregate to where gum is harder to notice because of the aggregate that you're creating in the sidewalk, but that's not a solution either. And if you look carefully, and I'll leave this fairly cryptic, but if you look very carefully at where you see the majority of gum on the sidewalks, I think you would or maybe not would be surprised at where they are. And it's largely at nighttime when it's dark to where all of a sudden you see a large accumulation of gum outside certain establishments in the uptown area in particular. But, Congressman Swank, that's a tough one.
I actually looked into a gum tax, not to penalize, but to fund appropriate cleanup. Unfortunately, gum in the state of Ohio is classified as a food, and you can't tax it.
Yeah. Thank you. Good discussion. Just because I thought it was one of the best student projects I've seen in so long. Does anybody remember the art project where they went and put pink paint on every piece of gum on the sidewalk? It's unbelievable how many are on the, I mean, it really is incredible. It's, you don't see them, and then when they're all pink, you see them.
They were pink. It was pink dab they put on every single one of them. Yeah, I remember that very well.
Okay, no further discussion on this. Moving on to 21.02.08. This is a change to the minor lot split from $100 to $150. Administration?
So the lots, the minor lot split fee, we see a lot of lot splits within a three-mile radius of the corporation limit. We have a few that happen inside the city, but several are just outside the city limits but are still under the purview of the city. And so the current fee is $100, we're requesting that that increases to $150. We are seeing more lot splits in certain areas, I think with the expansion of the county sewer project and the connections in some of those areas, we'll probably continue to see some lot splits and build sites just outside the city limits.
Thank you, Mr. Cheekey. Public, anything to add on minor lot split fee increase? City council, anything to add? Okay, moving on to 23.03.13M, sign application and permit. This would be a permanent sign. Current fee is $100, proposed fee is $150. Temporary signed permit, current fee is 50 and proposed fee is $75. City administration?
That's probably true.
Members of the public, anything to ask or comment upon? And members of the council, increasing these fees? Thank you. Section 23.06.02, previously H, will become E, and these are, application fee for accessory structure permit. It's a correction. There is no H section of code, so this should be E. And the current fee is $150 plus the square footage calculation. The proposed fee is 175. For a new construction permit, for an alteration permit, again, it's from 100 to 125, plus the calculation of the $1,000 of improvement, as you can see. So city administration, anything to add?
Again, I think this one's fairly straightforward. New construction, slight increase, alteration to an existing structure, and then accessory structure sheds and detached garages and that kind of thing.
Great, thank you. Okay, I'm seeing a discrepancy, Mr. Cheekey, on the sheet that you prepared versus what I see in code for the plus 0.03 per square foot. What we're seeing on our computers is plus .10 per square foot. Do you have code open? Is that what you're seeing?
Under new construction, .10.
Yeah.
Alteration, 150, and accessory structure permit, plus 150 per $1,000 of improvement is what I have down here.
Okay. Okay, so the, with your green edits on this sheet provided to me previously, it has proposed fee 175 plus 0.03 per square foot, but the change that we're seeing on council is 175 plus .10 per square foot.
The green sheet you have has been adjusted.
Thank you, that was my question.
That was a draft.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, yes, Member Claude Feltzer?
I'm just curious why there is such a price difference between the cost for new construction or the cost for altering an existing structure?
So new constructions, calculus is slightly different than the alteration or accessory structure. So the new construction is $175 plus 10 cents per square foot of gross floor area, whereas alteration is related to the alteration permit plus improvement value. So it's a slightly different calculus. So they're kind of apples and oranges.
City council, any other questions? Member Swank?
I guess I would ask the why. We can call it a different calculus, but what's the reasoning?
I'd have to ask the code office.
Any other comments or questions on this proposed change? Okay, moving on to Section 23.07.08D4, application and standards for variance. This is again a change from $100 to 125 plus advertising costs for a zoning board variance request. Anything to add, administration?
When we process these zoning board variances, we do have several that come through. The increase is for the administrative cost, and then it says plus advertising costs. I would like to highlight that we currently charge $50 for advertising costs, but our actual cost is 67.50. And so although it doesn't say this here, we're, in addition to the $125, amending the advertising cost to align with the actual cost in that instance.
Okay, so not actually, just keeping with the plus advertising cost language, but?
Correct. I just want to highlight that, you know, the zoning variances would be slightly more expensive to adjust for the administrative cost and the advertising cost that we're not currently covering.
Thank you. Public, anything to add, question on this? Members of council, yes, members of the council?
Just one quick question. So my understanding, based on our previous conversation, was that advertising costs and then plus administrative costs. So is the administrative cost within the 67.50, or is that?
The administrative cost is the increase to 125 from $100. Advertising costs, I'm just highlighting that when we process these and start these in January, you're going to see that advertising costs reflected with the actual cost.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Thank you.
Member Swank?
When and where are we required by law to advertise?
We are, whenever there is a variance request, we are required by law to advertise in a local publication.
A single one?
I think it just says a single, was it a newspaper, circulation or some sort of language like that?
Of general circulation?
Yeah.
Is the internet considered in this day and age, general circulation?
No.
So do you ask?
We have to actually post it and advertise.
Either in the A-News or the Messenger. And the product rates are the same, I would assume.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments on this change? Thank you. Section 25.03.04F, flood plain. This would add the word development, so it's flood plain development, and this would be from 100 to 125 dollars for a land permit application. Anything to add?
This is just to cover the administrative costs for processing that permit.
Thank you, Mr. Cheekey. Anything from the public? Members of council, change from 100 to 125? Seeing none. Section 29.02.03J, inspections. This would raise for the failure to appear for a scheduled inspection, would raise that fee from $25 to $40 per unit. Anything to add?
This is referencing rental inspections, and so currently, the consequence of not showing up for the scheduled rental inspections, 25 bucks, and the cost for us to reschedule that again for that failure to appear is not insignificant, and so we want to match and reflect that here.
Thank you. Members of the public, anything to add or question on this proposed change? City council, Member Claude Feltzer?
Could you just clarify if this scheduled inspection fee for failure to appear would only apply to landlords, or would it ever apply to tenants as well?
This is between the code office and the landlord.
Okay.
The rental inspection, if they pass somebody that shows up to open the place, it's the landlord's responsibility.
Okay, then I suspect there would be a lot of tenants who would like to see this increase.
Any other comments or questions? Members of the council?
So what about if they don't show up a second time or a third time or a fourth time? Is there, based on what I'm hearing, that has happened, so what happens then? Can we have a more punitive additional fee, like $80 the third time or something like that? I mean, I'm not saying what it should be, I'm just saying it seems like this is a lot of hassle and extra expense for the city to send our code officers out there if they're not going to show up.
I would defer to council's recommendation, if that's something that council wanted to put forward as far as escalating reinspection fees. What we're trying to do here is just capture the actual cost of that failure and the rescheduling for that inspection.
Member McCary?
I would be in favor of escalating reinspection fees.
Member Swank?
We have four other places in this document we're considering tonight where we have escalation fees. However, that said, one thing that Mr. Cheekey said, we probably should run by the law director and whether it's legal to charge for more than it actually cost. So we would need a legal opinion on that. But I agree with Member McCary.
It should be escalated if at all possible.
Any other members of council want to comment on this? Thank you for those comments. Oh, yes, Member Claude Feltzer? Oh, yes, Member Claude Feltzer?
I think perhaps it should be clear that it's a failure to appear for a scheduled inspection, like each time it happens? So, people don't think they just have to pay this once? But, I mean...
It's per instance, correct.
Okay, does it say that in the more extended document that you have?
I'd have to look at what it says in the code.
Okay.
We're just adjusting the dollar amount. It's not an adjustment of the code section in this instance.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Section 29.03.08, rental permit fee. This would add to the current fees in the code $25 per unit for each unit owned by a person or business residing 50 miles or more outside the corporation limit in addition to standard rental permit fee. Mr. Chiki?
So, it costs the Code Office substantially more to administer rentals that are owned by persons that live farther outside of the corporation limit. We have instances where we try to serve those individuals with compliance letters, certified letters. Certified letter now is a little more than $6 a pop. And we'll send, you know, one certified letter, a second, a third, a fourth, to gain compliance before we move into the legal proceedings to gain compliance. And really, the intent here is to cover the actual costs that it takes to administer for those entities that live further outside of the city.
Thank you. Members of the public, anything to add on this? Members of council, any comments or questions? Members of the House?
Yes, as I think most of you know, I'm really interested in the issue of rentals and making sure that we do the best to provide safe places for people, the 70-some percent of people in our community that are renters. So, I went back and looked at a lot of numbers. And since it's going to be a long night, I'm not going to go through all of it. But I did send it to the mayor and Andrew Chiki, our circus safety director. So, I thought it would be notable to mention that, and this, bear with me a few minutes. So, in 2023, only 90% of the rental units were inspected. In 2024, this declined to 76%. In 2023, 37% of the units inspected were reinspected due to violations of those who were inspected. In 2024, this declined to 32%. In 2023, time spent per inspection to reinspection averaged about 37 minutes. Insufficient data were available to compute this for 2024. Time spent on each unit inspected, including, of course, scheduling, travel, inspection, follow-up documentation. Given the staffing and current procedures, it is impossible, based on the information provided by the city, to inspect all properties annually as required by ordinance 29.0.02. At least 70% of an additional full FTE, fully devoted to code inspection, would be required to inspect all units. Assuming 37 minutes per unit and 2023 rates of inspection per code enforcement officer, that would be inspections per position. With the decline in inspections per position for 2024, it would require at least 5.18 code enforcement officers, assuming no growth in the total number of permitted units or changes in procedures or funding, which, of course, there are an increase and will be. We know we have light tech projects and all kinds of things coming up. And in 2023, 44% of a code enforcement officer's time was spent on rental code inspection enforcement. I suspect that number went down in 2024, considering that not as much was done. And that, of course, doesn't include all the ones that they were not able to do. And I am, believe me, I am not criticizing the code enforcement officers. I think it's a, I know it's a really hard job. I don't think they're being lax. I think it's just an issue of insufficient staffing for budgetary reasons. So, there's a lot more to this. I'll just do a few highlights. The 2023 average cost for inspection, first reinspection, was $134 across all units. This compares to a base fee of 175 for the first 10 units in a building, 75 per additional, et cetera, as it's shown. For buildings complex with more than 19 units in one building and for the units in additional buildings, this fee structure does not cover the average 2023 cost per unit. So, the bottom line is, there's not enough money to do what they're required to do, and it's not getting better. So, this suggests very strongly that we ought to find some strategies to increase those fees. I know of people who have been landlords in other places who have paid substantially more for their annual permit fee. And I'm not suggesting we necessarily do that. We may not be able to. But I think it's important that we come up with some strategies that will make it more feasible for code to do what they're required to do. So, there's more to that, which, again, I passed along. So, I would like to find out what exactly, based on the information and statistics that you have available, what it would actually cost to do the inspections and consider raising it to those numbers.
Members Swank?
Like, Member Sullivan, I've done a lot of research on this myself. And back early May, sent an email to Director Riggs inquiring about much of this information. And he wrote back to me very quickly afterwards and said, "We have around 5,630 rental units in the city that get inspected. Our cycle averages around 14 months for these rentals, two months outside the timeline that Members of the House mentioned." This is not a criticism by any means. This is just raw observational numbers. This averages around 100 units inspected in a week. So, I got with Auditor Heck to see actual revenue in the Code Office for this in 2020, 2021, 2022, 23, and 24, five-year period. And in that five-year period, we averaged revenue $702,816. Where are we going to get the money? If we were to standardize the rental permit fee, make it simply $150 for everybody. You have a unit, it's $150. We would raise $844,500. $142,000 more than we're currently raising. If we were to make it 175, what a mom and pop who has less than 10 units pays right now. No increase. We would raise $985,250. In other words, we would raise $283,000 more than we currently have. If we did the 150, it's $142,000. If we did the 175, it's $283,000 of incremental income. What would we do with that money? We could hire at least one more rental Code Office person. And we could hire something I'm not sure this town has ever had. Mary, no offense, go back further than I do. Have we ever had a building inspector here? $283,000, $142,000. We could hire those people. And we could allow our overworked code enforcement folks to complete their code-assigned task of inspecting every property in a 12-month period. Because think about this. If it takes 14 months and you happen to be the January cycle and you can get, property gets inspected in January of 2025. And for whatever reason, you happen to be the December cycle in 2026, that's 22 months that property could go without being inspected. 22 months. But if we could add some staff, and an easy way to do it would be simply to adjust the rates. I just gave two examples. It's going to take more than what I just threw out. This is going to take some study. But I have talked with some real estate people. When I say real estate people, people who own renters. And one of them said, "Alan, don't reduce my 175. Keep it there for everybody. I want safe people, and I want these people in my properties." And as bad a reputation as some landlords get, I think by and large, we have a pretty good group. And when those good people are telling me this, I kind of agree with what they say. This is not a solution. This is just an idea. But we raise revenue. Now, think about this, one last thing. The big complexes are getting one heck of a discount. But where's that income in those big complexes going? Not here in Athens County. Not one of those big complexes is owned by a company in Athens, Ohio. Not trying to be punitive, but we need everyone to pay their fair share. So, I throw that out for your consideration. Anyone wants these numbers, I'll be more than happy to share and information only, not as a matter of email discussion. Thank you, President Crowe.
Before I go back to Members of the House, anyone else have a comment or question on this? Members of the House?
I just want to add, and thank you for that, that in talking to landlords that I know who are, have a good reputation in the community, they want to be inspected because it's an opportunity to see what their place really looks like and make sure that there's not a festering problem. Like, there's a drip and they're getting black mold. Well, it's better to find out about it sooner than later because later is a lot more expensive and a much bigger problem. And I know from talking to a variety of people around the community that there are folks who haven't had their place inspected in years. I don't know, that's what they're telling me. So, I think that, I think everybody in the community, for the most part, that I've talked to feels as though there are some issues that need to be addressed. And one of the ways to do that is to add some teeth to what we're doing and raise the fees. I don't think that's unreasonable at all. There's other things we can do. Incentivize landlords to do better, but that's a whole other long story. But this is a step in the right direction.
Members Swank?
Very briefly, two things. This is one of those things I alluded to earlier. It is a big item that we might consider pulling and handling on its own. Secondly, a technicality. In the proposed 25-mile residence, boy, I hate to bring this up, but I'm going to do, because somebody's going to think of it.
50-mile...
Yeah, 50-mile radius. What if I set up my mailing address as simply a P.O. box down on Stimson Avenue? How are we going to verify that? That that isn't their residence?
As far as the application, you have to have, you can't use a P.O. box. You have to use a residence.
Fine, okay, good. That takes that off the, I've been watching too many crime shows on TV.
Mr. Chiki, one procedural note. Did you intend this evening for us to discuss the designated local emergency contact?
I did. I didn't see it as part of the agenda this evening.
Yeah. I'll go ahead and bring it up now, if that's okay with you.
Sure.
It's part of the same title. It's 29.03.05.
Is this okay?
Quick walker?
Yeah.
Okay. And this is to, currently, that title is titled Authorized Agent. And there's a proposal to change it to Designated Local Emergency Contact. And it basically says that, in addition to themselves, a local emergency contact for the receipt of process pursuant to this code... I better go back and read from the beginning so it makes sense. "No rental dwelling, short-term rental, or rooming house permit shall be issued or received unless the applicant designates, in addition to themselves, a local emergency contact for the receipt of process pursuant to this code. Said person must be designated in writing on the application for said permit. Such designated contact must reside within the county. A fee shall be established for any rental, short-term rental, or rooming house that is owned by a person residing 50 miles or more outside of the corporation limit. Apartment complexes with a local office manager are exempt. Rentals with a contract with a local rental management company are exempt." Okay, so that's also, with your permission, being added. Do you want to add, want to discuss that?
Sure. So, the intent here and the change in the language is really to align with what the Code Office needs. The Code Office doesn't need a designated agent necessarily. What they need is somebody that can get a hold of 24 hours a day. That could be a maintenance person. That could be a trusted contact here locally that the Code Office can contact to remediate acute, immediate issues, not longer-term owner-related issues. And so, the exemptions are really, in the event, in the cases where you have a local rental management company that is acting on your behalf for your rental, we have that communication, that contact. In the event that you have a local office manager, some of the larger places have an onsite manager and maintenance staff, and really, they're authorized to act on behalf of that organization, that's exempt. But in those other instances, you know, again, in the same way that we have with the fee, it is difficult sometimes for us to gain compliance with those individuals and entities that are further outside of, out of the corporation limit. And we're attempting to align the need of the Code Office to get compliance with the fee and also be more flexible with who somebody can authorize here locally to take care of those immediate problems that are more like general code compliance for issues and maintenance-related things than it is for, like, serving and acting on behalf of that person who we still have communication with. They can choose to do that if they wish.
Oh. Okay. Is there anything that, yes, please, Mr. Deloitte?
Hi, my name is Robert Delitch. I live here in the City of Athens on Morris Avenue. I am Chair of the Board of Zoning Appeals for the City of Athens. And on numerous occasions, at least several, I'll say, we have had discussions as a board to require, in particular, short-term rentals, to have such a contact on record with the zoning office as a stipulation required in order to grant them a short-term rental. Turns out, we've never actually approved any of those, but that was a stipulation that was included because we saw a problem potentially where the particular short-term rentals needed somebody local. If there was an issue, a noise issue or other issue with the property, and there wasn't a local agent, then there should be one. And we were requiring that. So, I think the Board of Zoning Appeals has seen very clearly this is a need, at least for short-term rentals. We haven't had decisions like this to make on long-term rentals. But I think this is a very good thing to include. And we've already tried to do it on a number of occasions through the Board of Zoning Appeals. I feel pretty strongly that the board would agree with me and that that is something that is important. And I see this as a very good move by the city. I want to support this.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? I will note that, you know, as soon as I started speaking, I knew I was stepping out of line. Because this exact change is not a code fee change, it was going to be discussed at a later committee meeting. I heard from the person who does know what's going on always. So, I apologize. We have discussed it this evening, but we may discuss the underplanning and development in a couple of weeks, too. And a few of these, as you pointed out, may be pulled out anyway and done separately. So, we did it once and we can keep, yes, Member Claude Feltzer?
I think we forgive you for getting out of line on that. And since the issue has been raised... I'm curious, this local agent, that sounds like a great idea. Would that only be to interact with the Code Office? Or could that also affect tenants? I mean, would they have a better chance to hear from someone than if their landlord is out of town or something?
It certainly could. And if a tenant was having challenges getting a hold of their landlord, we would have that emergency contact on file and can potentially work as an intermediary for fixing acute, maintenance-related issues in particular.
That's really good.
Any other comments or questions on this, which we will probably discuss again? Okay, great. Next up is 29.12.02, Citation for Sanitary Violation. This, again, is adding $25 to the fees. So, going from 50 to 75, 75 to 100, 100 to 125, 120... This again is adding $25 to the fees, so going from 50 to 75, 75 to 100, 100, 125, 125 to 150, 150 to 175. These are exactly mirror the first fee-change proposal that we looked at tonight for Garbage and Rubbish. Mr. Cheeky, you want to explain sanitary versus garbage and rubbish?
Yeah, so sanitary, a good example would be, let's say you have a baby pool, and you leave that baby pool out in your front yard, and it starts to get mosquitoes and all sorts of other rotten stuff in there. Let's say maybe you put a strong beverage in that baby pool, and now it's, it's festering. That's a sanitary violation. It's a little bit different than garbage and rubbish.
Thank you. Members of the public, anything on sanitary violation? Members of council? Members Swank?
Stick with the pool. What about persistent water puddles?
Persistent water puddles?
Yeah, now granted, we had 11.44 inches of rain in July, but we've had none in August. But standing water that still exists on residential or business property, is that sanitary?
I don't think I'm qualified to answer that one. I have, I don't.
Well, we go back to the mosquito thing.
But, but like, you know, something that's, that's obvious to a, to a Code Officer, to the solid waste officer. You know, I use a baby pool because that's something that actually happens.
Right.
And that we have a lot of experience with. We also have certain beach parties that happen at the start of the year that get a little bit out of control and create some sanitary issues that we have to remediate, and that, that's when this is applied.
Any other comments or questions on sanitary violation? Okay, moving on to 37.02.04 Native Pollinator Friendly Program. Originally, this was a registration fee of $25. It is proposed that this be made zero. The fee is waived. Remove the fee. Anything to add, Andrew?
The intent here is to encourage adoption, to align with climate change goals and the adoption of greenhouse gas, reducing activities. That's the intent.
Thank you. Mayor, can I add?
But, but it is important to still have these registered, you know, so that we recognize that someone is putting in a pollinator as opposed to just, hey, now's the time, just let my yard grow as long I want, as I want it to be, you know, all summer long, and it's not a pollinator. So, yeah, to remove this fee, I think, is a good idea.
Members of the public, any, yes, please?
Robert Delitch, Morris Avenue, City of Athens. Yeah, I think this is a good idea. I've been intending to create a pollinator garden myself in my front yard. And having to deal with paperwork for it, well, it was still paperwork, right, but you want to register it, but that fee is a bit of a barrier, yeah, and you're gonna get people not bothering because there's a fee. I think it's a good idea to eliminate this and encourage people to register with the city and, and make it legal and start documenting how many people are actually doing this, because we don't, I think, have good documentation now, so.
Thank you. Any other members of the public? Members of council? Member Claude Felter?
I also really like that you're getting away with the fee for this. The more pollinator, native and pollinator gardens we have, the better. I'm curious, since we're discussing it right now in a city council meeting, perhaps it would be worth mentioning how people can get registered for this, even though it doesn't have to go into this documentation officially.
So on the city website, you can search for the Pollinator Garden Application. That application then can be filled out and emailed to the Code Office or sent in directly in person.
Okay.
So you can use one of those options.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions, Members Swank?
What I'm hearing is that the $25 fee is a deterrent to people participating. Is that what I'm hearing?
I think there's speculation of that, but I don't think we have anybody testifying to that.
Because, excuse me, Mr. May wants to say something.
Just possibly. However, I would contend that to remove that $25 registration fee, and you still have to register your property to be part of the pollinator program, you know, it's, it's an environmentally proper thing to do, in my mind. So I, I've not heard anybody sit there and say, ooh, that $25 is in my way from being able to do this. But to not have it would certainly promote them using programs that are out there through the soil and water, or whoever that has pollinator seed programs, and spend that $25 on getting the proper seeds to put in a pollinator instead, but.
Now, I, I understand that, and as you well know, we have a large garden at our house. In fact, on the way over here, I had to stop and clean up because I was putting out the hose on the Bob Evans bed because it's been so dag on dry. But I think there's a, a, a certain buy-in that people need to have, and I favor the $25 fee. I favor it for another reason. You have to go down and fill out a form. There are city costs associated with that. Someone has to fill out that form, somebody has to keep the record and all of that. For whatever reason, this program has not been successful at all. And the reason I say that, we have a whopping five homes in the City of Athens that since 2022 have registered for this program. A house on Longview Heights, one on Avon, one on Applegate, one on Norwood that's being converted back to lawn, and one on Joneswood. No one since September of 2024 has registered for this program. Ironically, the person that tied up a lot of this city council's time in 2021 to promote this program isn't on this list. My fear is this. We're gonna get more and more homes that collect, because if you get on this program, there are guidelines. There are specific things you have to do. One of the things you have to do is have a flowering plant in each of the three seasons, spring, summer, and fall. That's in the guidelines. I drive around town, I'm seeing houses now that I can't even see the windows in the house because of the way vegetation has grown up. Yet, ooh, that's a pollinator. Well, not everything's a pollinator. I'm very much in favor of the program, but I'm very much in favor of keeping the fee because I would like people to feel that there's some buy-in, if nothing else, to cover the city's costs of administering the program. Nothing's free anymore.
Thank you. Any other members of council? Yes, Member McCary?
I'm wondering perhaps if President Crowell or others have knowledge of our sustainability plan and if there are references to pollinator gardens there. I don't see them mentioned in our comprehensive plan, but I know that the city has invested in creating pollinator gardens. So I'm curious as to whether anyone knows if this sustainability plan is calling for us to do this in any kind of way.
I'll just respond that the current chair of the Environment and Sustainability Commission drafted and ran through the city and through the commission, a new section of the plan, which is on biodiversity. And I'm not familiar enough, it's, it's very thorough about all of the items in that. Member Claude Felter, are you aware?
I am the city council rep on that commission. I don't recall there being discussion of the Athens City Pollinator Garden Registry in that discussion of biodiversity, but we have been on that commission talking about creating a webpage on sustainability that would be part of the city's webpages, and I think it would be a very appropriate thing to include on, among the items that are listed there, how to register your pollinator garden.
Excellent point, though, Member McCary, and I'll certainly look into it and bring more information to next meeting.
Thank you.
Mayor Patterson?
I'll be really brief. Just as a friendly suggestion to council on this topic and listening to you, Council Member Swank, you know, we did this with Soul Smart to where now someone can apply and get a solar application, their, their, their application, their permit to put solar on their rooftop or ground mount in their yard if their yard is big enough. And so I guess in conferring with the Deputy Service Safety Director, if we're able to have this application process online, that may be part of the problem, you know, in terms of people not applying because they have to drive all the way down to Kern Drive to go get their application in place. So maybe consider keeping the $25 application fee, but someone being able to do it completely online from their comfort of their own living room if they choose to put in a pollinator, but at least it's registered again at the Code Office so the Code Officers know that what they're looking at in someone's yard is a permitted pollinator garden versus just letting your yard grow.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other comments, Members Swank?
Yeah, I think to the Mayor's point here, and then to be able to, for Code Office to be able to easily access the list without having to go through files and all of that, yeah, I think that would be a great compromise.
Any other comments or questions on this issue? Moving on to Section 41.04B. This is the Title 41 application fee, and the current fee is 125, and the proposed change would be to 150. Andrew, anything to add there?
Not really. This is for site planning.
Thank you. Members of the public, any comments or questions? Members of city council? Site fee, 125 to 150. Okay, moving on to Section 45.07B1 Historic Preservation Design Review Application. Proposal is to change this fee from $70 to $100. Mr. Cheeky, anything to add?
Again, another one that's fairly straightforward is processing that.
Thank you. Members of the public, anything to add on the Historic Preservation Design Review Fee? Members of city council? Anything to add or question or comment? Thank you. Section 49.03.01 Special Right-of-Way Permit. Again, a change from 50 to $75 for this update to Title 1. Mr. Cheeky?
I think council's gotten pretty familiar with special use of the right-of-way permits over the last year or so, and so this is a slight increase for the application fee for that.
Thank you. Members of the public? Okay, members of city council, any comments or questions on this special? Seeing none, we will move on. Section 49.03.02 Certificate of Registration Application for the Micro Wireless Cell Tower Permit, changing that from $75 to $100. Mr. Cheeky?
So this is primarily for microcells. This is like 5G-type cell towers that are much smaller, but there's wider deployment of them for, for the coverage, and so that's what this permit is for. It's not for like the big towers, it's for these like little microcells that you don't even really see. You probably wouldn't notice them, honestly.
Okay, thank you very much. Members of the public, anything that, yes, please come forward.
Robert Delitch, live on Morris Avenue here in the city. I was just in a conversation with an AT&amp;T contractor that is trying to sell business access using a 5G-type system. Sounds like what you were referring to, that they put a box in essentially that's a direct line, 5G connect for a particular business, one-off, for each business would have their own box essentially. Is that the kind of thing we're talking about here? Because we may see, be seeing an increase in those in the near future, if what I was hearing from the contractor is correct. One thing that's happened is Verizon Wireless has sold all of their cell access in and around Athens, I'm not sure the exact geographic extent, to AT&amp;T, partly because they are buying out Frontier for their fiber and other landline connect networks. So they're doing a trade-off, they're selling off to AT&amp;T, and AT&amp;T is trying to leverage this now and maybe doing exactly what this is, this is mentioning. So having a fee that, that captures the increased use of this 5G network as described may, may make sense here, I think. My two cents.
Thank you. Valuable two cents. Anybody else from the public? Members of council, anything to add on this proposed change? Okay, that finishes, finally, our first agenda item. We are now moving on to two agenda items on the national opioid settlement. First with the Purdue Pharmaceuticals' Direct Settlement, and then, very specific, I won't read all those, I assume, drugs that are on there. But I will say that basically, city council is to sort of discuss the participation agreements for these settlements. We have received, as far as I'm aware, only one of the two participation agreements. And we would then have ordinances that would come up and that, that, in which city council would give the mayor, would authorize the mayor to join these settlements. So basically, for the City of Athens to be able to receive monetary returns from these companies over the opioid lawsuits. This is a little bit time-sensitive. I believe it has a deadline date of September 30th if the City of Athens wants to be a part of this. City administration, anything to add? Mayor, do I have that pretty correct?
You do. You do. I mean, we've entered in, entered in these class actions before and, and have been successful along with a large number of other municipalities, so this is just continuing down that path.
Okay, thank you. Members of the public, anything to ask or comment on this? Members of city council, any questions on the settlements? Okay, wonderful. So both of those items have been covered. And then moving on finally to the Gender Neutral Language, which is amending certain city code sections. Mr. Cheeky, the city administration has done a very nice job. As they were reviewing our code for fee changes, to notice a number of gendered language that they would like they're proposing to remove and replace with our non-gendered language. I'm not going to go through the whole list, but they are very, the same things we've kind of seen from he to they, he or it to the mayor or board, or using person and these separate things. So anything to add there, Mr. Cheeky?
We found, you know, wouldn't you believe, we spent a little bit of time looking through the code recently. We found an additional 14 instances, I think, were just noticed in Title 29. Oh, there's a, like, he/him related to the Service Safety Director mention, which should be a fee, so that's, that's really all.
Thank you. Members of the public, anything to add on the gendered language, non-gendered language issue? Members of, yes, Member Claude Felter?
Just two quick comments. I really liked it when I was looking at this, that the, the mayor is no longer referred to as a he. We did have our past mayor, Sarah Hendiger, was female, and you never know when we'll have a female mayor in the future. And also, one little typo I noticed, just a real minor thing. On Item 17-03-07, the he is in red, the they is in black, and I believe that should be reversed if you're moving to they.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Member Claude Felter. Any other comments or questions from city council on this proposed change? Okay, thank you. That completes committee of the whole. We will now move on to the Finance and Personnel Committee. This is chaired by Mr. Reisner, joined by Members Wood, Claude Felter, and McCary.
Finance Personnel Committee has two items to, to address. The first is the, to dispose of properties no longer needed for municipal purposes. One is at 25 Central Avenue, and the other is at 458 Richland Avenue. I'll ask the administration to tell us why they're no longer needed.
We have disposed of two other properties that were similar. The city, under my tenure anyway, had four units that were managed and maintained by the Metropolitan Housing Authority. Up on North Blackburn, there were twin houses that sat up there. We did sell those several years ago with the blessing of council. These are the remaining two properties that are owned by the city, but managed and occupants placed there by the Municipal Housing Authority. So rather than that, it's just hanging on to these houses for the sake of hanging on to these two properties. We found it prudent to work with the Metropolitan Housing Authority. They have agreed to purchase them at a near-market rate, which is not what we did with the Blackburn Road properties. So just asking council to authorize the, the sale of these two properties to the Metropolitan Housing Authority. You know, by and large, Metropolitan Housing Authority has done a great job of placing individuals with great need in these houses and, and will continue to do so. So it's just getting the city out of the business of owning single-family home dwellings and putting them in the hands. and putting them in the hands of who we deem to be the proper authority to own these and manage them.
Thank you. Public, which also includes a member of Council.
I'll get over there.
Yep.
Get some exercise. Mayor, Alan Swank, forty Townsend Place, Mayor mentioned market rate. I just looked at Zillow. One of our central avenues is about a hundred and forty-two thousand, and the one right next door to the fire station is two hundred and one thousand on Zillow right now. Are we able to get that kind of money?
Not exactly that, but we'll get...
Fair prices for those two homes.
And I would agree with you, Mayor, that the, because we have, what, Mary, six on the far east side of the Metropolitan Housing Houses, and there are people that need that, but I wish Sol Bay was in here. Oh, she is. Good. One of the things we're going to hear is that we're taking two, that's a tough to say because we're taking two potential single-family homes off the market, and in a price range that is considered affordable housing. And it's a tough balance. I agree with you a hundred percent. We need housing for all types, all conditions of people. But this is a tough one, particularly, and you know what? If we were to, that's Zillow. If we were to put the Central Avenue house on the market, and I know exactly where that house is, it could probably go for two hundred thousand dollars on the market today. So how do you balance housing for people who truly need it, people with challenges, with people who just want their first home that they may live in for five or ten or fifteen years? So I just want to, it's a tough one. It really is.
Mayor?
And I don't disagree with you at all about the tough challenge of this, but I will say that as long and as far back as I know, that these have been maintained and operated by the Metropolitan Housing Authority for individuals who would never have the opportunity, or I shouldn't say never, never is a long, long time, but the likelihood of them being able to purchase and own this home versus being in it at something that is manageable for these individuals, and that we're not, and I know this isn't what you're saying, but this is something I feel very strongly about, and that is historically, and I'm talking way back, the individuals who are occupying these homes would have likely been placed somewhere that segregated them from the rest of the population. So by having a diverse housing stock across the city, and this is on Central Avenue, and the other one, as you know, is on Richland Avenue, right on Richland Avenue, right next to Station Two, Fire Station Two, again, allows for the individuals who are living in them to have a full life and not to be segregated elsewhere within the city. But I don't disagree with what you're saying. I hear what you're saying, but this, I think, keeping it in the Metropolitan Housing Authority is keeping it to where there is diversity in housing stock for people of all walks of life to be able to live in them comfortably with the aids that they typically have for those who are living in this. They have, in some cases, twenty-four-seven individuals living with them.
Thank you, Mayor. I was not aware of the historical occupancy that was on Israel. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any others in the public? Members of the committee, any comments? Member Wood?
One, very much support disaction on doing this. I think it's great for all the reasons outlined. My only point of clarity is the sum of two hundred and eighty-two thousand, total or each?
Total.
Thank you.
Was that answered for you?
Yeah, one word answers the best. That's the best answer. Done.
Any other comments? Okay, we'll proceed on to our next item. Water pollution control loan fund, W P C L F, submit application to the administration. I go?
So the W P C L F is a revolving fund designed to operate in perpetuity, providing low-interest-rate loans and other forms of assistance for water resource protection improvement projects. The last one that we did was a zero percent interest loan through this program for the Richland Lift Stations that received the county septic. And so what we're requesting is the ability to apply into that, into that program again because the interest rates are pretty darn low.
Any projects in mind with this, assuming that we get the money?
I'd have to ask the Public Works Office.
Okay. Members of the public, which also includes the council members out there. Members of this committee, Member McCary?
Just checking my notes, is this the item for which we'll need an emergency measure to meet an August deadline?
It does have an August, I think it's August twenty-ninth is the application deadline.
Okay. Well, next week we could, this require an ordinance or a resolution?
An ordinance.
Ordinance. We can do a one reading, suspend the rules, do an emergency clause, get it done, get it over with. Anything else? No? Well, that concludes Finance and Personnel.
Thank you, Member Reisner. Moving on to the Transportation Committee, chaired by Member Spianis, joined by Claude Felter, McCary, and Reisner.
Do I start?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so the first one is an ordinance amending Athens City Council, excuse me, Athens City Code Title Seven Traffic Code, Chapter seven point oh-five Parking Regulations. So there's just a couple of changes in here, not a lot. Essentially, this has to do with construction meters and signs for paid parking, and so there's an added C under Section One. The fee for city contractor bags shall be established by separate ordinance. We talked about that earlier. And then an additional item, well, a couple of them. So under Section Two, Athens City Code Title Seven Traffic Code Parking Regulations, regulation of city parking garage is amended as follows. So, or will be if we pass this thing. Anyway, so under number two, except for elected officials, employees of the city whose primary duty work site is in City Hall, City Hall Annex, the city parking garage, or downtown office, leased by the city may park on Level Three or above without charge in the city parking garage during official work time only. So in addition to that, it says, this applies only to permanent employees, members of city boards and commissions, this is a change, members of city boards and commissions whose primary meeting location is in City Hall may park on Level Three or above without charge in the city parking garage during meeting times only. The concern I have, can I bring this up now, is that it doesn't mention City Council there. Perhaps it should, and also, you know, many of us, we meet after five, as you may notice. So we're wondering if we can do what has been done unofficially for a long time and change that to that City Council members or boards and commissions that meet after five can park on lower levels than three. So anyway, to continue, in part because it gets scary up there, just saying. All right, so numbers, letter C, the provisions relating to city parking garage rates apply twenty-four hours per day, Monday through Saturday, and dates determined, blah, 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 and dates determined by the city service director are exempt from charges. Item D, rates shall be set by separate ordinance, which we've talked about. So anyway, any extra comments from the administration first?
To take it right down from the top, as you alluded to, we're trying to put into practice, or into the language what we already practice, which is we exempt boards and commission, people that are volunteering and serving and using their time and resources for the city. It seems like the least we can do is give them a place to park while they're meeting at City Hall. I will note that we exempt elected officials under the first line, that you all get that privilege already. And as far as parking on Level Three or above for City Council late-night things, I think that's reasonable. Typically, we try to leave those lower levels open to promote use of the garage and access for people that might be up here a little bit longer during the day, but certainly we could revisit that. Under item C, dates determined by the service safety directors, really to allow some additional flexibility when we have certain things that come up. For example, we were approached by the Athena Cinema last week about doing an event on top of the parking garage, a movie. It would seem within reason that we want to encourage people to attend said event, but we can't exempt the parking regulations or the fees during that time currently, and so we have an event, but still paying to park. And so it's a question of allowing some flexibility to promote certain activities that happen during certain times.
Anyone out there in the audience or City Council members want to comment? Apparently not. How about Member Claude Felter?
I'm curious how this works logistically. How do the parking enforcement officers know that someone is in a meeting, and how can that person like prove it if ever challenged?
So we currently have a hang tag system. So my hang tag looks slightly different than your hang tag, which looks slightly different than boards and commission members. So there's a full-time, a part-time, and a temporary hang tag that is dated and has to be reapplied every year. And so that's one way. With the new parking garage system, we'll have some more flexibility as far as being able to monitor that and record it.
Okay, thank you. Member Reisner, did you have a comment after looking at that more closely?
Yes, something that's been bugging me for twelve years. So I might as well get it off my chest. I frankly feel that members of City Council should be able to park anywhere in that garage we so choose when we're here for city business. Now, can anyone give me a good reason why we shouldn't? You've got seven members. You've got two levels there that have, what, fifty, sixty parking spaces, and somehow seven members are somehow going to discourage people from parking there?
Yes, number McCary.
I guess the question that would raise for me is if we have any information from the administration about that potential change putting undue strain on our parking.
The answer is no.
Okay.
And Councilmember Reisner?
Yeah.
I have nothing in that fight. I mean, and I personally, having served as a City Council member and now as the mayor, again, I'm fine with entertaining that thought and possibly making that change. Again, I, there is seven of you, and...
Yeah. Well, I mean, I think Council does a fairly important job, you know? Obviously, if we don't pass legislation, nothing in the city gets done. You know, the whole thing just grinds to a halt. City dies.
And we have a massive pay after all.
Oh, I know. I don't know what I'd do with all that money. No, that's, that's, but I, I mean, other elected officials in this town, and that includes the mayor, the auditor, and others, have reserved parking spots. I don't begrudge that. That's fine. It's okay. But on the other hand, I think that council members should have some respect also. I mean, yeah, in addition to benefits, I got my fifteen thousand dollar life insurance policy, you know? Of course, I got to die to get it.
But you won't.
I don't intend to.
Yes.
So anyway, I'd like to have that put officially codified, that City Council can park on the first level. For city business.
Yes, we don't want to cheat. We just want to do it for city business.
No, I don't, I'm not going to go take a run to CVS. No.
Okay. Mayor?
To Councilmember Reisner's point and to your comment, I do respect City Council. And I, again, you're elected officials. You're elected by the people, you know, within your ward or at large, and so therefore, again, I don't care. I think it's great because you guys. Council, we can certainly change that to have it, you know, because you are elected officials elected by the people.
Well, I personally don't disagree with that. I'm a Reisner, but, you know, you guys can decide what you want to do, and...
It's past my bedtime. I'm feeling grumpy anyway.
Get more people to run for council.
Could be.
There you go.
Could be. You need every incentive you can. That's a fact.
Because of what level you've come to the parking garage? Okay.
It could come to that.
Could come to that. You never know. All right, pretty soon we're going to get punchy here, so let's move on.
I already am.
Yeah. Okay, moving right along. So second one. This is an ordinance amending certain sections of the Athens City Code Title Nine, General Regulations, Chapter nine point one-two, Streets and Sidewalks, Section nine point one-two one-eight, Materials on Street or Sidewalks. So this is the addition. This goes along with some of our other previous conversation. The addition is G, no dumpsters, moving pods, or construction trailers may be set on sidewalks or public streets that first being permitted by the service safety director or their designee. The fees for such permit shall be provided by separate ordinance. H, no closure of any street, alley, or sidewalk may be allowed unless permitted by the service safety director or their designee. Any temporary closure request shall include a pedestrian and vehicle maintenance of traffic plan, which Member Claude Felter discussed earlier, and follow the manual on uniform traffic control devices. Sidewalks closed for extended periods must be appropriately barricaded and signed. Special event street closure not regulated by this section, the fees for such permit shall be provided by separate ordinance. I have one suggestion, and that is that rather than have special event street closure not regulated by this section way buried in there, perhaps that might be up in a item I, perhaps, if there is such a thing, or maybe up higher so that people will notice it. That's the only suggestion I have. I think that would, you know, make it more obvious, so people would notice. Anyway, administration?
I think we covered this pretty well in the previous discussion under Title One, so I'll reserve any other comments for anyone else that has them.
Okay. Anyone in the audience, including elected officials? Yes?
Mary Abel, forty-eight Stratmore. Under this, in a previous discussion when you were talking about temporary street closures, I do think that there are exceptions, and I was looking up to see that other college towns do have the ability to have temporary street closures in residential areas. And this isn't for a long period of time, but if you wanted to have some little street event that did not impede traffic, and you could put together that plan, that it would be allowable for just a short period of time. So I would encourage you to think about that, because I do think there have been instances in the neighborhoods where people have wanted to do that, they haven't been able to do it, but it is something that could be outside the downtown area and limited only to neighborhoods with certain rules and regulations, of course, that you cannot impede the traffic. Just a suggestion to consider. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Anyone else? Okay. Anybody on the committee? Any other comments? No? Okay. Transportation is done. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Members Spianis. We now move on to City and Safety Services, chaired by Member McCary, joined by Member Reisner, Member Swank, and Member Thomas. Reisner, Member Swank, and Member Thomas.
Thank you, President Crowell. City and Safety Services has two items on its committee agenda for this evening. The first is Title IX, General Regulations, fees to be set by separate ordinance, and the second, General Regulations, amending Section 9.0101 Animals at Large. And for each of these amendments, we're talking about updating sections of code to replace, I'm sorry, we're talking about making sure it's more streamlined when we're updating fees, and having to do so across separate sections of an ordinance is a little more cumbersome. So occasionally, we try to separate where the fees are from the rest of the legislation. So first, do we have any questions about general regulations, Title IX, from members of the committee in making this change?
Do you want to go there first?
Yes, from the, comment from the administration?
For 91005, it's really just a change of removing the fees out of that title section and moving over to Title 1. It's just a code cleanup.
Yes. And with cutting the weeds, that would be the same purpose, just to simplify where the information is for future updates.
Yeah, fees need to stay in the fee area.
Yeah. Okay. All right. So this is more of an organizational change than anything substantive, but do we have any members of the public who would like to comment on this proposed change? Seeing none, any other members of council? Member Reisner?
Yeah, it just dawned on me. All these changes that we're going to be making, switching, moving things around from here to there, that means we'll have to update the MUNI code, correct?
Yes.
And there's a fee associated with that, correct? Any idea how much?
No.
Oh, come on.
Perhaps a related question is, is, it's my understanding that this change will perhaps save us some money by consolidating where we would be making the changes across a smaller number of areas, but does our clerk have any thought on that? Possible. Okay. So we'll have to, if we would like to, we can try and get some information about just how much this would save or cost, but, yeah. Did you have any other concerns, Member Reisner?
No, that was it.
Okay. Great. Well, seeing no additional questions or comments, I would say that our committee meeting is concluded for the evening.
Thank you, and we are adjourned at 9:48 PM. Thank you for staying and for your work this evening.